Are we all ready? Does everyone need a minute? Are we good?
Let's dive in.
Okay, we're all set. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 13th, and the time is 6:31 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. First on our agenda is our consent agenda, and it's minutes from June 4th, 2024. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes, June 4th, 2024.
Good.
Excellent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is warrants. We have 75, 76, 78, 79, 81, 82, 83, 2, 4, 5, 7, and 10. And those are going around for signatures. Any questions or comments on the warrants? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve warrants, 75, 76, 78, 79, 81, 82, 83, 2, 4, 5, 7, and 10.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is a vote for disposal of obsolete materials. Someone going to...
Do you want to talk about the obsolete material?
Sure.
But we have a number, do you want me to come over?
Please, please.
Next. Well, you can have my list, yeah.
Is there a folder for today's?
Yep.
It should be. Primary folder? I only see July 16th, today is August 13th.
If you type the title, 2024/2025, school committee meetings.
Oh, so it's not in the...
No, I think they're all separated out.
Okay, I'd like to get that back in our primary folders.
Everybody have a chance to sign?
Yes.
Thanks for that. Sorry about that, Lisa.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. So the books that we have to you to request disposal of, there is a number of our previous math curriculum books that are quite old. And we went with a new series this year and a new program, illustrative math. So we're looking to get rid of the old textbooks. And also, over there by the library door, we have a number of leveled readers and big books that were from two other different series that we had for math and ELA that we don't use anymore. And they've been sitting there for a year and no one wants them. I've asked staff multiple times. So we'd like to find them a better home or dispose of them. So a lot of the books were brought over from West Street Schools. So they're dated and they look kind of dated.
Any questions for Lisa on those? Hearing none, I'll take the most motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the disposal of obsolete materials as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is visitor's comment. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record of the meeting. Any visitor? Seeing none, moving on. Next up is new business, policy, ACAB, Title IX.
Okay, we have been mandated. Some of the new regulations came out regarding Title IX, and they came effective on August 1st. So there is a memo in your folder from our attorney stating the scope of what kind of discrimination falls under Title IX. Another change to the definition, what it's no longer called sexual harassment, it's called sex-based harassment. How actually knowledge of sexual harassment is determined, and how to train employees, as well as modifications to the grievance procedure. And as a result of that, our attorney drafted, along with some of the legislation, drafted a new sex-based harassment discrimination policy, which would replace our old policy of ACA. I did not put in for a vote because I did not know if you wanted to vote on it or do a first read. However, that being said, this policy really needs to go in our handbook for the new school year. So that's kind of how I left it for you. I didn't know if you had a chance to take a look at it. But basically, we had a training earlier this month, and our attorneys went through it with us and talked specifically about, you know, what the new policy entails. And it will be taught to the... It will be conveyed to the staff and the students in our handbooks and at our compliance training.
So is this a policy that we had already looked at and updated?
Once.
Once, but doesn't... It's not reflective of these?
Right, and I think what we... The last time we did it, we did a first read, second read. But the... What moved forward was the actual policy as presented.
Okay.
Because I think George and I had a conversation about it. We weren't going to change anything.
Right.
Relating to like regulations around various.
So... Do you all want to look at it? Or since it's coming from Kimberly, just go ahead with that and put it on, have this be first read and include it for next? Policy section? That's...
I looked at it. I've been actually looking at it, but I looked at it before the meeting.
Okay.
I don't have any questions about it. My concern is that if it's not potentially approved, and then it's in the handbook, and we're potentially making changes after potentially approving the handbook, it's just going to make it real messy.
Okay.
And that's what we were advised by the attorney. She said, probably vote on it first or do it in the draft form. But what her recommendation is to move forward with it.
So why don't we take a minute and just everyone look through quickly the handbook changes as well for that? And then we can just... We don't have it on for a vote except for the handbook. So we're essentially, our hands are tied. We can't actually vote on that policy because it's not listed on there. Just the handbooks are. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, I wasn't sure either how to approach that. If you had to, if you could make a motion to vote, I wasn't sure how that worked.
Usually you have to have it on the agenda. We could make a motion to amend our agenda to include the vote so that it can be part of the handbooks discussion? Do we all think that's the appropriate way, making a motion to update our agenda to vote?
Sure.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to update the agenda so we can have a discussion on this particular topic.
And vote.
And vote.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's resume our discussion then. Take a minute, let's just look through this, make sure everyone is comfortable with this as we're going to be voting on it. Again, this is from our attorney. And...
And again, these regulations just came out August 1st. So there was... There's just not a lot of time for school districts to have the... To get this in the handbook as a result of the timing of the legislation.
So I would just like to, one thing, on page 2, about halfway down above the length of Granby Public Schools, it says inquiries about Title IX may be referred to, and it says in brackets, ABC schools. So we should have that updated to Granby Public Schools.
You hear that? Page 2?
Page 2 of the drafted Title IX handbook language, 24, 2024, 2025.
Okay.
It's not that, it's this... It's like a two... Just a two-page document.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, yep. I got this. Sure.
It's just a two-page document.
It's in my folders.
Actually, just above that, the Title IX coordinator for the bracket, school.
Yeah, so just those, just update those.
Sure.
Actually, and then...
Thanks for catching that, George. I missed that one. Missed most of those.
Going right now.
So on page 2.
Oh, yep.
Title IX coordinator for the Granby Public Schools.
And where's the other one?
Oh, and there's a typo on her email. It's Granby instead of Granby.
Yep, I see that one as well. You fixing it, Todd?
Okay, I'm doing it.
Yeah, sure. I see your name there.
And then there's one further down.
I see that one, yep.
I don't know who's... There you are, Mary Jean, got it. Okay, so for ACAB for Title IX, it will look like this for the handbook, but is this the actual policy?
That's the handbook. The policy is advisory. The policy's down here. ACAB, it's a big policy.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry.
We had to fix that one anyways.
It's different than what I see down here. Embarrassing to say that I do most of this on my phone. Okay, so first, we can have a motion to approve ACAB Title IX?
I'll make the motion to approve policy, ACAB Title IX.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, do... I would like to... So the drafted Title IX language for the handbook is not a separate vote. It will just be inclusive for when we're reviewing the handbooks. Those are the ones you just made adjustments on.
Right.
Okay, great. All right, so moving on to the handbooks. First is East Meadow School.
So the handbooks?
Handbooks? Yes, please.
And you all have a copy of the document of the changes? So there aren't significant changes. We did, we, of course, changed the terms for when terms close and when they... When grades close, they open. When report cards are aligning them the best we could with parent-teacher conferences and other meetings. We have a new PBIS matrix, which is just updating what expectations are in the different settings in the school. And we also added bullying allegation form link. Last year, we put a live form on the district website so that if people want to file a bullying complaint, that they could access it there. So it'll be in the handbook and be live. And so if people are reading it online, they can click on that and go right to the form. One of the challenges we were having this year was around hats. And what we took out is that they were permitted to wear hats in the hallways and cafeteria. And it would be at the discretion of the classroom teacher. Well, we experienced a lot of challenges because we have three grade levels where there's teams of teachers, and some teachers would allow it and then some teachers wouldn't. And so then, one student might go to one class and then go to the next class be told to take off the hat. And then, so it really became challenging. So the teachers felt very strongly that hats should not be worn except outside. And I... I think that it would create a lot less stress and problems here.
And not in the cafeteria?
No.
So I have a couple questions. I'm seeing for term 3, up at the top, says grades close May 30th, and then progress reports and report cards are issued on the last day of school. Shouldn't that only be report cards?
No, progress reports too, because students on IEPs get the progress reports whenever a report card's gone home. And also preschool would get progress reports.
Okay.
Not report cards.
So I'm thinking of like high school progress reports.
Right.
Okay, excellent. And then, just going through, the Title IX language needs to be updated to reflect what we just modified with the school.
Correct. Yes. We also took out a... Some language in there about a bullying hotline, which we don't think exists anymore in the district. It's a combination of a handbook from multiple schools, and we really tried to clean it up this year. And based on the feedback that I was given last September, or August, rather, we did make some changes to try to organize it a little bit better. And including adding in live links for teachers' emails. That was some of the feedback that I received this year from parents, that they didn't really know their teachers' emails. And sometimes teachers provide it, but it gets lost over the course of the year. So there's one resource, they will be able to access all of them there.
So there is no... That whole section is being taken out?
Yes. And the only other piece is the updated language on what you just discussed.
Yep, and that just needs to be updated to changes. Any questions or comments for the East Meadow School handbook?
I have a couple. With the removal of the phone line, which I get, might not exist anyway. I did look at the form, and when you click the form, it's a Google form, so it populates with your email.
Okay.
And this would be kind of, I guess, for both schools. If you're... If part of the policy is you're allowed to report anonymously, what are we going to do about that part?
That's a good point. Let me...
Circumvent a form where you can not attach your email? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But...
Maybe David could answer that?
I thought you should be able to have a dropdown, say, with your email or anonymous.
The... What you asked. That was one of the reasons why we had the telephone hotline, so that someone could call and leave a message and would not have to identify themselves.
So do you have any knowledge of whether that hotline is...
The hotline is functional. It is almost never used, but it is functional. And I think it forwards the initial communication is forwarded to the Director of Pupil Services.
So even though the bullying hotline is a 4677520, and all of our other numbers have been exchanged to different...
Well, not all enough. A little bit of disadvantage on how my phone...
Sure.
Was with me at this moment. But I can definitely get that information for you. And, but the line, there still is an active line. I guess it's a good thing. It's not, I mean, it's not being used, hopefully because there's no... It's not needed. But it does... It does exist.
I just want to point out the Google form. It does say not shared for the email. So it does have it on there when you're logging into fill out the form. But just below that, it does say not shared. It was on my screen.
It says the email's not shared?
Yeah. So your email and Google account are not part of your response.
Okay. You know, I'll test it out and see what happens.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with adding some language to the handbook that they can call the East Meadow School and just leave a message anonymously. And I think that would be sufficient. Okay.
I will follow on the other...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other question I had, and this has been like a sticking point for me, is the dress code one. I know we've had like previous discussions in previous years about it. And I saw the change, and I get the change with the wearing hats. My one thought is that in approving handbooks and procedures, it would just be nice to make sure that it could be kind of substantiated or supported. And so I kind of went down the rabbit hole a little bit of going through our policy and masks policy, and then the mask general law. And the mask general law around schools with dress codes is only, you know, making recommendations if it violates health, safety, or cleanliness. And so, you know, I do believe places have gotten away from the discussion around hats. That doesn't mean that I don't want to support teachers. That doesn't mean that I don't, you know, think anything is respectful or disrespectful. I just am concerned that as we get narrower with the language, we potentially open ourselves up for questions.
We have had around this table with those left that have been here for a while, we've gone around and around about dress codes on numerous... Numerous occasions. So it's not... It's not a new... A new question.
And I just think of instances too where you might have, you know, students with migraines or students with other conditions where they, you know, have medical or other related issues where they're wearing hats. Again, don't want to make any problems for teachers, and that would be harder to police and navigate. I'm just worried on the... Our side of things with approving language.
What is the justification for not wearing hats?
Well, it has been problematic this year because some teachers will let them wear it, and they're on the same team, and they'll go to the next classroom, and right away they have to take it off, and then they can go to the next classroom and put it back on. So it just...
But it is teachers' discretion. You say that. So, I mean, if there's teachers that it's not within their discretion, they want them to remove the hat, then there's... I mean, it really shouldn't be...
Yeah, we can leave it as is. I think there's also a piece of it too that, you know, we have a veteran, a large veteran staff. I mean, I don't mean veterans, like they served in the military. So they've been around for a while, and there's a strong feeling like, you know, not wearing hat inside a building is a sign of respect. And so like, there's like values that factor into it, which I know not everyone shares. And so it's a sticky walk. I understand.
Yeah, and so that was the piece too. Because I was like, well, if it's at teachers' discretion, then what is kind of the teacher, staff members rationale for saying yes, they can, or no, they can't? Like with any other piece of clothing too. Like unless, and that's where my mind went too. And I'm like, oh, we said cafeteria. But in my mind, wearing them in the cafeteria is probably a problem because if you have one or two monitors, and you have all kids with hats on and buds on or whatever, then at that point, how do you see them eat? You know, be safe and like do... So I'm like...
Right. Well, we can leave it as is at the discretion of the teacher. I'm not willing to go to the far ends of the earth to try to resolve this. I... Because I live in South Hadley, I... Like I was very aware of a Supreme Court case that came through the town because of a T-shirt that became kind of legendary in the area. And I certainly don't want to bring any of that kind of angst upon Granby Public Schools. So if you feel it should just be left alone, I'll just let the teachers use it at their discretion.
Well, I still think... I mean, if there's something that's untoward or disrespectful written on the hat, then that's still within the discretion of the teacher to ask them to remove it.
Right, sure. And there is language around that to anything that's offensive.
Right, like the offensive thing we've done.
Yeah.
I'm remembering that, right?
Right? Because we were really hung up on the distracting versus disruptive.
Right. And what constituted offensive for... Right, okay. But, you know, if it's particular language or something attacking or... I think that that... I don't know, it is a sticky wicket, I understand. But I'm glad Jill was the one that brought it up because I was going to say...
I was waiting for it.
Um, so I... So do we want to... What do we... Saying, leave it as is for now? Further discussion as far as that goes? What is... What are the thoughts?
I'd almost prefer to leave it alone. If it's been something that, you know, has been accepted in the past and just maybe start there. My assumption is, as time goes on, they'll just... There may be changing in language, but it does, it kind of ebbs and flows with what's actually happening around us.
We also don't want to be more... Put ourselves at odds with mask general law or MASC or anything like that because that, I think, can also bring angst upon the town if someone was willing to pursue it that way, where we're sort of out of step with those providers, not the right word, but sort of... That guidance.
Yeah.
Regulation, thank you, that's the word. Okay, so any further discussion about the handbook? So for the vote, we just would include the... Our final decision about the hats. So I'll need a motion?
Make a motion to accept the EM handbook changes with the exception of the dress code taken out alteration.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Lisa. Let us know if there's extenuating circumstances or a lot of pushback. We can leave this at...
I will too.
Okay, thank you. Next is high school. We have the assistant principal here, Scott. Does anybody know Scott Friend here? No.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
I've been here six weeks.
Been a little longer than that, but I think officially six weeks, yeah.
So this is his first big assignment. So he's in his high school handbook with you.
I can go through some of the changes, the major ones. So we have some housekeeping things in terms of a class change for personal finance, some technology things, some updates to dual enrollment policy as well. One of the other major ones, kind of piggybacking off of the East Meadows, so the dress code. Students are allowed to wear hats and head coverings in the high school.
I actually really like this wording. I think that this, if the numbers align, this might be what we need for the East Meadow one. It's got us, everybody. I... So I think that this wording might be appropriate. I'll share it with you, Lisa. This is a nice addition to the dress code. Okay, I'll send it to you.
In addition, so students that are 18 can sign out. They're legally an adult, so they have the ability to do so. So that's just been added to the handbook. One of the changes, students must be on time and present in school on the day of an athletic event in order to practice and/or play in that event, as well as other activities, MIA and non-MIA. So prom, things like that, students need to be here until at least 11:00. Some updates were made for summer reading, honors, AP courses. We also added some language for field trips and expectations and guidelines and eligibility for students being eligible to attend field trips. And also some updates for the junior high promotion retention, as well as an attendance, obviously in accordance with special ed and things like that. Keeping that in mind, we also added some language for artificial intelligence. So the rise of A I in the classroom, uh we felt it was important to add that as it becomes more and more problematic for teachers. Uh and then finally, the last part, obviously in regards to the conversation with Title Nine, um what I will add is that um. Just like three hours ago, we got some suggestions from the attorney that were made in the document, so I don't think it was updated on there, but we just got it. And I think we're, those are accepted and those have been put in there.
And there's just a couple of ones that we had mentioned too were the Title Nine Coordinator for the Grammy Public Schools, just those little ones we can. We've already updated it. And Mary Janes, so we'll just make sure that those carry over here. So the um the tardy. Improvement plan that's in red. So does that mean it's being removed?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Question about the um. Timing for athletes.
Yes.
On time and present. So is the seventy-five percent rule that's um for M I A A for that student athletes? Section above it is, is that where that comes in? Because otherwise it they conflict, I think.
Um so the policy that we're gonna be, that we're proposing is that we want students there for the entire time, I believe.
But again. Administration reserved the right to review. I'm just thinking, you know, you try to make schedule appointments outside of school hours, but it's not always possible. I'm speaking right now as a mom of an athlete and sometimes dental appointments or getting a physical. So they can continue to play, doesn't always work.
Yeah. So I think in those instances, so students just wouldn't need to produce a doctor's note and then that would excuse them.
Okay. Because then the next one, required percentage of time by M I A A, which is the governing body for student athletes is seventy-five. Percent of the day. So I just wanted to. I I don't see how M I A A has a uh thing for prom cotillion dances, but not for. Athletes playing in the games. Am I reading it wrong?
When I'm reading it, that last line, however, the M I A does not have an official attendance tardy policy. Each participating member's school sets its own. And so was our original one seventy-five percent and then we're just.
Well, I'm just wondering why the the M I A A is what we're using for attendance to attend to a prom. If we're saying M I A A, which governs the athletes. We're saying they need to be there. To me, that seems at odds.
The seventy-five percent was to be consistent for all extracurricular activities.
Right, but now we're removing the seventy-five percent for athletics.
If I'm reading that right, you're removing the seventy-five percent for non athletics.
Yes.
So they're reducing fifty percent for the non athletic things. Not for athletics.
I'm I'm sorry. I've first day back from vacation. My brain is like mashed potatoes. So I apologize. Let me try again. I I'm the only one that has a problem, so I I'm I. I'll stop. Any other questions uh for the high school?
Yes. The only one I have. It's around field trips. Now I have to find it. Well, I guess there's two questions. The first one might be easier. The language around A I. Is that? Intended to be a potential policy or is that just procedural?
I would tend to lean towards procedural for that, um mainly because we're just trying to set some expectations for students in the classroom.
So I don't know that we have any. Policy yet.
Right. No, I've attended a couple of workshops just, which is in my report, that uh. The Massachusetts doesn't have any regulations on that yet, so they're in the process and the hope is to have something in place by October. So these are guidelines, at least something we have in place. Um I do think it's uh as we move on to the rest of the year and. Moving forward is definitely gonna have to be honed and and really um and part that I am, I did. Like I said, join the task force, so we will be having meetings throughout the year. And hopefully we'll have something in place. Uh I think they said twenty-two states currently have have A I um policies for for schools. Massachusetts is not there yet, but we hope to have something in place. Soon. So I think this is just a way for us to. Let the students know that we're aware that, you know, A I is out there and we're going to really um. You know. Take a look at it. And I guess that, you know, one of the issues is, is, you know, what what does plagiarism look like? And I think that becomes the biggest issue with A I at this at this point. You know, what at what point does become plagiarism or? Or a tool. Exactly. This is where we are.
Does this read like a policy though?
I wasn't leaning one way or the other. I just, it was something that just kind of popped into my head beat. And I know it's so new and I'm sure you're dealing with it already or people have been already. So it makes sense, I think, to have it in there. I was just more questioning where we might end up on it.
There are, there is a couple of superintendents have had submitted some things that they're putting in their in their handbooks right now, but just as a guide, just to to address it. So this is just something we're definitely gonna be encountering in the next couple of years, if, you know, sooner than later. I I don't necessarily think this is an actual policy. I think right now this is. Procedures we're looking at. I'm not sure. We didn't we didn't quote it as a policy, so just as language. Whatever that means.
And so we're removing the tardy improvement plan because.
So based off of my um knowledge of how it kind of unfolded uh over the previous years that um. We feel like efforts could be placed uh for tardy improvement in a different fashion, uh just not in official capacity like it's stated here.
Awesome. Any other questions for the high school?
My one other question was the field trip piece.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jill. No, sorry.
Don't worry. It wasn't, it wasn't letting letting it go. I know we spent some time. With I J O A, our policy around field trips, giving the superintendent the responsibility for any information um. About procedures and protocols for all field trips. My one kind of question and concern is with the proposed change in language. Are we? Setting ourselves up at all for any problems with? Students being able to attend. Meaning passing six out of seven classes, attendance, discipline, um and then.[1095.11][1095.13] Still having administration reserving the right to retain a student from a field trip. I just know it gets really sticky when students are not attending field trips and they're technically present in school. I get why. But I just, I don't know where that.
I I wasn't here when they created that and I think uh. Ally would have a better understanding of that. Uh what does the policy specifically state that we don't have? That those students can be exempt from because of those?
Yeah, the policy left it open.
Okay.
To the superintendent to oversee those pieces. And I guess my just one concern is that if these are all of the situations where a student could be denied access to a field trip.
Is it on me?
Or does it open us up to somebody kind of fighting that or saying like you can't because of some other reason? I don't know what it is, but I'm just. I know it can be really hard to not have a student attend the field trip.
And is. So we had the field trips and then we had out of state field trips. So is this, this is inclusive of both?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, but then the out of state ones sometimes are not really school.
I think we learn they're all schools.
So do we want to revisit student uh the field trip piece or are we good with? The way it is and we can make updates as needed? Thoughts, questions, comments?
I I can work with Ally and see if we can, you know. Ho- hone it up a little bit to see, you know, does ultimately fall, if it falls ultimately on on me as a superintendent, you know, these are discussions I have to have with with the students and. And the families and I would imagine and just not excluding students who skip without discussions.
I think that's a good, I think the point you bring up is really good. Um I think we were thinking of it in terms of like a positive reinforcement for students to want to do well so that they get to go on these things. But I think the other part of it too, some we should keep in mind too, so we can definitely.
Just think of situations where, you know, students might need more support, but they don't have it yet, and they're failing classes and then. I I don't know if there's a way to say included but not limited to or something like that, just so you have a little bit more discretion.
Which may include, but yeah, I think I think that's probably a better way to to to.
So do we want to bring this back next time or are we good with that um? Included uh may include?
We just want to add that piece to the field trip that may include? And then we can just put that on the floor?
Are we comfortable with that?
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, hearing done, I will take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the Granby Junior Senior High School Handbook um as amended.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, employee. Thank you. Nice to meet you also.
The only change to the employee handbook is the um the new policy. That's it. And I did change it already in there, those. That said, schools. That is the only change to the employee handbook. And it just says replaced policy number A C A V. So it's replaced, that's a new number.
Okay. Can I have the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five employee handbook.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, continuing business, school choice.
Um the enrollment dashboard has not been updated uh since June because the numbers are still uh fluid right now. We've accepted some students, um but we haven't received some um information back from some of them, so we'll have a better handle on it uh the first week of September. To share with you, um but um it's been staying steady so far. You know, we have a few um enrollments at the elementary school and I know there's at least two that I can think of at the high school at this point. Stacy did update it, um but she said I'd like to wait till September first to to we have a firm number.
Okay, any questions on that? All right. Next is the superintendent's report.
Well, I've got a lot because of the last meeting I didn't attend. I just wanted to let out there that the meeting that um posted for um. July sixteenth um was not posted properly, so um we did not have it. I wanted to put that on record. Just so that we have. So summer school is now completed. Uh Mr. Taylor did a fabulous job keeping the program running. There was twenty-five summer school enrichment students um and thirty-two E S Y students. Um at the high school, nineteen students were offered credit recovery and all of the students repeat um. Completed their respective programs. Working with Granby Police Department Officer Gilli. Did a dare basketball camp. Uh with sixty students, he did a great job and that was um in the end of July, so he did a great job with that. There were sixty participants. They had a little um ceremony at the end, a little game, so it was it was a great uh great job. I'd like to thank Chief O'Grady and um David, I don't know where David Kesselwick went, but um Chief O'Grady um. And the police department donated about uh twelve telephones to the district. We had some phones that were not working properly and um. Because the police department updated their phone system, we were able to give us twelve phones and I have a brand new one in my office and it works great. So I want to uh give a nice uh thank you to Chief O'Grady and the police department for that. Um we had a summer retreat for our, with our um admin team on Wednesday, July thirty-first and Thursday, August first. And our focus continues to work. Uh we continue to focus on the strategic plan um as it relates to teaching and learning. Um our focus will be high quality instruction and supporting teachers and using data that they have to effectively target instruction. Um having high developing expectations for all. And uh in a in a growth mindset. We established a shared understanding of what instructional strategies that allow for rigorous engaging and powerful learning experiences and setting appropriate grade level or content. Area learning targets that consistently monitor progress. And that's what we'll be talking to the teachers about um when they return um next week. You know, what does that look like in the classroom? How are we, what are our expectations for them and really take a look at what what our instructional materials are to support that. And we're on. A good tra- trajectory because we do have that new math curriculum, the illustrative math, which is really uh one of the high quality instructor materials. Teachers did meet today on uh on that and had some P D on that as well. So we also talked about uh safe and learning, uh safe and supportive schools. I worked with Officer Gilli and the Children's Advocacy Center. They are going to be providing workshops to us and our staff, parent professionals and teachers um to support socio-emotional learning. They um have a great um menu of options that we've going to incorporate into our program uh for professional development. For all of our staff members, we're particularly going to focus on ensuring that some of our parent educators get some support this year in in those in those needs. So um we have continuous second steps at East Meadow and we are now moving that second step program into the high school, which is a socio-emotional curriculum. So we've, we looked at that as well. We're excited to announce that we received the twenty-first after-school grant in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to support our after-school programs. That is a program that we worked with the collaborative, the Collaborative for CES for Educational Services. Um it will provide before-school chair at seven fifteen to eight fifteen and then after-school care from two forty-five to five thirty every day. And we're looking at uh Lisa and I and um. As well as Sue Craig, who talked about um creating a task or or committee to see what kind of programs we're gonna put in place to to get that. Rolling, so that that's first thing on our agenda beginning next week. Um so our focus really on that grant is on math, so we're gonna be um working with the new I M math curriculum as well as. Some of the C S Engage grants, so that really will help us. This grant will allow us to give P D. Um to staff, professional development, homework support for students, enrichment activities and um. You know, whatever else we deem is necessary to support them. It also provides transportation. We can also use the grant for transporting. Students before and after school, so that's a a big chunk of uh the grant will be helpful for us for that. So. Okay, transportation has um. Transportation planning for the school year is now complete. We finalized the bus routes and the um assignments. So right now, um the transportation issue, uh transportation will be on our website. We have sent out postcards to families. Actually, I don't think they're quite sent out yet. Uh Caitlin still has a few on her desk. Postcards are going out to family. It's that state uh where your bus is, um what time you've been picked up, what your bus number is. So little postcards are going out. It is also um in the principal's newsletter newsletters and it's going out in Blackboard Connect on Friday. So right now, we're in pretty good shape with busing. Last year, I know it was a a little bit problematic, but I think we have it under control this year. Early. A staffing update. We have new teachers orientation will be next Tuesday and Wednesday from eight to two thirty and if you click on. There's a a copy of the agenda in there for you to take a look at. We're close to being fully staffed. And we're looking to hire a special educator at East Meadow School and a second shift custodian at the Junior Senior High. We're also reviewing some students' schedules and educational needs to ensure that our parent educator needs are being met. We're still maybe short two parent professionals. We do have some um interviews scheduled, but we're still in the middle of looking at um students need to see if those positions are actually necessary. We do have two parent professionals that we also filled out at the high school. I did give you a list of the folks that are hired. Good news is we're able to hire a nurse, which was really exciting. So we're able to get a nurse at the elementary school this year. That was something we were a little worried about, but we did find a great candidate. She's great. And um. And uh these are uh our positions. Do you want me to read them all off?
Do you, did you post that in our folder?
This, I may not, if I will send, I I will make sure it's in there. Yeah, I think it's in here.
It's uh August thirteenth agenda?
No, it's from.
My minutes? Oh, maybe I didn't put it in there. I'll check. I'll I'll double check. I'll I'll put it in for sure.
I thought I.
You were talking, you don't have to, or just you were talking like we could see the dates and.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering.
I probably, I probably didn't. I will, I will drop it in. I probably, I probably didn't. I will. I will drop it in there for you.
Okay, great.
And I I didn't put it in here, but I did attend a AI task, which which reminded me, I did attend an AI task force last week. I joined that as in our capacity for Granby Public Schools and we are working to create a policy for the state. So I'm on that task force and they'll be having a series of meetings, eight to ten meetings to mid-October until we can make recommendations. So I've I've joined that task force as well. So that's where we stand for now, but good to go.
Any questions for Mary Jane? All right, Todd, you're up.
I will put that.
So a couple of things we've mixed news with some of our federal grants, particularly Title One and IDEA are coming in a little less than what we anticipated. But our Chapter Seventy came in higher because the state approved one oh four per pupil over the governor's original proposal of thirty dollars per pupil. So we're still a net positive offsetting those grant reductions. Not great news on the kitchen front. We went up the public bid, no bidders for either the subcontractor bids in the electrical work. We even did a second sub bid to try to garner some interest. None came. We went to the general bid and there were no bids. I emailed the Attorney General's Office to see do we, what options we have.
So nothing's been done?
Nothing's been done. We can't move until there's a bidder. Or I get additional guidance from the Attorney General's Office. So I emailed them two weeks ago and I still haven't heard back yet.
I'm confused because I thought we had it's because of the sub bidder for the electrical.
So our bid, original bid that we have is for the architect and design service. Now we need a general contractor to bid on the project. And there's no general contractor that's bid.
So we're never going to get this kitchen.
I won't say never.
I'll say never because at this point, I mean, good lord.
It obviously isn't the timeline that we wanted. We can't control when people will bid on projects, but we will find a pathway forward to get this project done. So whether that means the AG gives us guidance that we can there's another avenue, or we go back out to bid and maybe construction is happening during the school year.
I just, I mean, we had a very finite amount of dollars. And the longer we wait, the more expensive stuff's getting.
Right, and
So I don't want.
Still with with the information that we put to bid, we're still well within our budget. We, we have a cushion within.
I'm not frustrated with you. I'm frustrated with the process because we were hoping to have this wrapped up for this school year and here it is August and we don't even have a general contractor. So that to me is highly insulting and very upsetting that we can't move forward.
The engineer and the architect are as surprised by this as possible as we are. There's when I was looking for some guidance for them for next steps. They looked on the Central Register, which is one of the two places that we post, and there were fourteen design services out to bid and over fifty G C's out to bid. G C's aren't, there aren't enough G C's for the jobs that are abandoned. We are in the same boat as everybody else. It is not a Granby problem. It is an industry issue that there's just too many projects, not enough companies, not enough workers.
Man, oh man. You got any good news in there?
We got more in Chapter Seventy than we originally anticipated. And then the other good news that I would say is even though we have been short-staffed with our maintenance and custodial team, they've done a great job in preparing our buildings. The elementary school is just about ready to go, final touch-ups. High school has a couple of rooms and hallways to finish up, but there, they got us ready to go. They did a great job, short staff, short window, and they they pushed it and got it done.
Awesome. Congratulations to them.
It really has.
Can I ask one kind of clarifying question? So I know the Chapter Seventy thing is good. What were the pieces that came in or what can you go over again? What came in shorter than anticipated?
IDEA was about twenty-two thousand less than our projection. Title One was about seven thousand less than our objection. So those were the two bigger ones.
And what makes those numbers different?
It's a state formula. Part of it's going to be enrollment.
Okay.
So.
And which enrollment numbers do they use? Are those the October ones?
I don't know if they're October ones or Aprils. Okay, do two.
Yeah, two reporting, yeah. Okay.
We've had general contractors into work on that building before, right?
The last one was probably the roof project.
Yeah. Wouldn't be in violation of any laws to reach out to have an inquiry as to why they didn't want to bid on this. It's not prompting anyone to to bid, but it would be a good source of why maybe in addition to the shortage of general contractors, they didn't bid on that particular project. And maybe the next time it's posted, it could be amended. Or just that phone conversation could spur somebody to look the next time it's posted. You know, if you have fifty, sixty different options, sometimes maybe it just gets lost in all the possible selections. But if they see, hey, you know, such and such called me a month ago and now it's posted, maybe I'll throw in for it. Maybe a high context relationship might be the solution to getting around that. Just a thought, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
So is that going to impact anything with us for for food, for lunches?
The, I've already met with Ken from Chartwells. We still, we have the operation in place to provide as much service to our student, the high school as possible.
Yeah.
I know he's like everybody disappointed because they could probably, they would be able to do more, but I think it provided good variety for the students, given the limitations that they have.
It's still free lunch, right?
Yeah, the state is still funded. Their primary meal is free and the second lunch or additions à la carte options are at a cost, but their primary meal is still paid for.
I see. Perfect.
And anticipate Ken coming to one of our September meetings, give up kind of a what recap of last school year and some things to anticipate next week.
September seventeenth.
Anything about the chargers? What, are they working?
They've been working.
Okay. And they're charging appropriate, like charge?
We don't have an account set up with them to receive payment as a point of.
Right, but people can use them and they're charging.
Oh, I know that at least one station is available.
Okay, great. Anything left over from the lightning strike?
She's going to hit just everything.
Yeah.
So I gotta get them all out.
Taking some notes. I don't know when any of this stuff is.
There's not any outstanding work related.
That's great. That feels good. See, you had some good news in there.
I thought I had a lot of good.
You should have buried the kitchen part because that sort of took away from any good news that you had.
That's why I tried to end with good news. Maintenance team and custodial crew did a fantastic job.
Yes, they did. Congratulations and kudos to them, but I'm still pissed off about the kitchen. Any other questions or comments for Todd? All right, Jill?
So the Flabber we met on in June, the end of June. Just making sure, which means I did not review anything. And essentially it was just looking at the the proposed budget for twenty twenty-five and that was approved. And then the executive director's report focused on the graduations that were happening within their programming.
All right. Anything else that we need to discuss? Anything that we want to make sure is on the agenda for next time? We should really have subcommittee meetings for next time, which I think is let me see what the date is. I don't remember.
Twenty-seven.
Oh, good. Second day of school.
Could have been the day before school. But it couldn't have been the.
All right. So should we have, do we want to have subcommittees that meeting or do we want to push it off until the the following the following week? So we have back-to-back meetings, this twenty-seventh and the third. Thoughts, anybody? Oh, when is your convocation?
On the twenty twenty-two is is.
A Thursday and twenty-three, so.
Twenty-two, four, if you're interested in coming.
Well, the one where you opened, I've been coming.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. And that's on the twenty-third?
Twenty, that's a Thursday.
Oh, the twenty-second. Okay, that's just, that's.
That's the convocation day.
Okay, so not just new teachers?
No, new teachers are the, do you want to come on the new teacher?
No, 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 no. Okay, just want to make sure.
Twenty-two.
All right, eight twenty-two, eight. Okay, great. Sorry, squirrel.
All right, I'm having the same thing.
So on next meeting, do we want to have subcommittees or do we want to wait and do it the following following meeting?
Really usually the second of the month?
Typically, typically, but we're so out of cycle with them. So I don't, we can wait and do it the later meeting in September. So we can, because usually the one right after school starts is busy. There's just a lot of stuff to go on, getting everything going. And then the third, we have the back-to-back meeting. So I think we can wait. I don't think we have anything pressing. Do we have anything pressing as far as budget and stuff goes for this? So we can wait until the seventeenth? Okay. I did reach out to Kathy Kelly Regan about our membership. And so she said, if there is a vacancy, then the school committee will come up with recommendations and along with a select board will appoint for the remainder of that year until the next election. So for example, if a position, like we were talking about Stephanie's position, will be an unexpired one-year term on the twenty twenty-five ballot. And then George is up and he would be a regular three-year term on the ballot for the next one. But we will have in the not-so-distant future, two open positions. So we still have Stephanie Parent's position that is open and we will have another one at some point.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Yeah, I know. And I'm, I'm not, I just, so we need to get the word out, try to get people interested. So if principals could include that in their letters, if you have social media at all, if you want to have anybody reach out, we need to try to find some people to do that. So that we can get people. Yes, we're looking for two. Jill will be probably at some point. The sooner we can find some, she has a new position. So that was sort of the bargain.
I'm trying to hang in as long, but I mean, there's already conflicts. Do you know what I mean? Like there was a spoken meeting tonight. I, you know, there's just, there's lots of things that we think are going to be competing.
So we're trying to, okay, we'll get some words out. We'll, we'll do our best to. So if anybody has anybody, they can send them my way, send them to Mary Jane. Just, we need to get some, some people excited to join us. Exactly. If there's anything else that you can think of for the agenda, you can send it to Mary Jane and she'll publish it before the next one. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to our next spot. All right, we'll vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part A Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Jenny, can you do a roll call vote? Do you know how?
No, Mary Jane, we'll start at the, we're going to do a roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Mike.
Mike.
Aye.
Sorry, I was having a phone with her. George?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.